That mean we get a bigger tax credit?
Yeah.
Um.
Brought them back because they got rid of them.
Yeah, it's been gone for four years, but it's bad.
Got rid of them.
I'm trying to read. Oh, here's the actual bill. I'll send you guys the actual bill.
Might be safer if I was on mute tonight.
You didn't need tonight. At the end of that sentence, you could have just said.
I'm just happy I have a glass of pure moonshine I get over at the Beechams.
Dark cups and you can't tell what's inside.
Did you see that story about the wastewater treatment plant in Alabama where they were distilled?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, we can do that. Brian, can we do that?
It's seven o'clock.
That's the way to generate revenue. I'm on board.
Until you get caught, yeah. All right, seven o'clock, we'll call the meeting to order. Suzie, can you call roll?
Councilmember Groves.
Here.
Councilmember Chambers.
Here.
Councilmember Salzweedle.
Here.
Councilmember Yankovic.
Present.
And Mayor DeVore.
I'm here. Uh, move to approve the consent agenda. Oh, Mike, you wanted to add?
Yeah.
Something under new business, right?
Item B, social districts on a new business.
Would that change?
Everybody got that email?
Yes.
Okay.
Would that change our motion to adjur- uh, to approve the adjuror? Approve the meeting? The agenda?
I'll support.
Motion in a second. Any other discussion? Sue?
Councilmember Groves.
Yes.
Mayor DeVore.
Yes.
Councilmember Salzweedle.
Yes.
Councilmember Yankovic.
Yes.
And Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
Public comment, Perry?
Um, I'm good.
Okay, I don't think we have any other public doing. Mike, anybody with their hand raised?
Nope.
Okay, old business, number A township water, Mike.
First off, does anyone have any questions about the expansion studies from last week?
I have a lot, but there's so much information that I just couldn't take it all in.
Okay.
Is there a revised vision to make it lame and easy for the majority, at least for me?
Uh, I can talk to Williams and Works about that.
There's just a lot of information.
Yeah, there is.
I think once they present to the uh, task force board, Mike and I can put together a talking points thing and bring it back to council. That might be a little bit easier, I think.
Yeah, we could probably simplify. I mean, try and simplify as little.
Trying to break that whole thing down, we may not even need all of it, so.
Yeah, well, especially if we're looking at getting some input back from the general public. I, I just think it's even way more than they could even probably even comprehend.
Agreed.
I agree.
Okay.
Um, the only other thing I did is I gave you all a copy of a spreadsheet that I worked on. For projections for fifty year and a hundred year, if you have four twenty-five in place. Um, if you break it down, um, there's significant amount of money. That's basically what I'm, what I'm saying. There are a lot of, there's could be a lot of money coming in if you had them. And it was just something I thought was important that you need to see. Not, I'm not asking you to do anything with it. Um, I just want you to see it because it's a lot of money. And I think, you know, I think the projections, we don't know how much it's going to generate out there. The more conservative valuations probably are better, are better. But I mean, the, the rate of inflation, it's in line with what, what the average has been throughout all since proposal A has been in its, in existence. So I, I, it wasn't just something I put together. I mean, there was, there was a lot of thought into how to analyze this, so. Um, just wanted to show you that and, you know, just give you the information.
Yeah, I, I look at it as if, if one development goes, it's just going to cut loose out there.
Exactly.
Yes, it'll just snowball.
And Mike, and Mike, these are current numbers, right?
So, well, in a sense, yeah. So what I did was I took the taxable value of Cascade Township that once, that, that, of all the commercial properties, what that, what that also didn't take into account was residential properties in that square mile sector of the, of the township. This was only commercial and um, what I did was I tried to build that out over ten years based off the, the inflation rate multiplier, the average that's been in since proposal A, so the, the numbers are, I would, they're very good projections, I would, I would say. I wouldn't, I wouldn't call them accurate, but based off of the methodologies that the state uses to generate revenue, I, I, I'm confident with the projections.
Okay.
Anything else on water? Wastewater? Good. All right, uh, showboat update, Mike.
Yeah, so um, have some good news. We took in, we finally got a payment from the um, we got our payment from the uh, um, community foundation, so that, that is credited into our account. Also, um, we'd also received another eighty-three thousand approximately last week through the donations from the chamber. The good news is, is right now, um, we have, we have, we will be able to pay the full contract of Wolverine and we're about twenty-four thousand dollars ahead, if you include all the consultants as well, so that can be starting to be put towards the bathroom. Obviously, there's, I want to say, there's like a hundred and seventy thousand dollars out there in pledges at this point. I, I, I wouldn't quote me on it, but I think that's the number. Um, I thought Mark or Liz would be on, but they're not, but um, I know, but I, at least from our end, the uh, we're going to be able to have enough to pay the full contract for Wolverine. And we have that going and, and they're, and they're, and their fundraising's still going on, so, and I believe there's going to be another couple of, there's going to be some pledges that have been made that will be coming in as checks probably beginning of the next year. So, um, and they'll be pretty substantial payments, so I know the fundraising effort's going very well. Um, Jim, do you have?
Well, I think we're about a hundred and ninety thousand short of the eight hundred thousand dollar goal, but like you said, with the pledges that came in, so um, the brick campaign is going really well. It's, it's probably close to a hundred thousand raised in just bricks sales so far. And we had a couple of um, citizens donate a fifty thousand and a twenty-five thousand last week too, so it's continuing to go. Uh, I believe we're going to get there. It may be another month or two, but, but I just think we'll get there.
Yeah.
Yep.
And construction's going. I mean, they're, they're moving along. We were, Dan and I went out there today and it's, I mean, they're, they're moving. They're already past the drywall. They're already starting to put the trim in. Moving along. Um, and then also the, uh, the nonprofit committee, um, will have our first meeting Wednesday, the sixth. Me.
Three P M., right?
Correct.
Okay. All right, any other questions on the showboat? MERS, Mike?
Yeah, um, so uh, since our last meeting, um, we filed all the paperwork necessary to make the, the modifications to our pension plans. We've done that. Last week, we had um, webinars for the employees to get to have them, have them get an understanding of what the changes are. Um, I sat in and all three of those webinars. I thought they were very, I thought they were, well, they were, were very well attended, but I thought they were very well done. I'm also, uh, we've also made that payment of a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. I believe we're going to, we're going to make that payment later this week. Um, so we're, we're working on that and then um, I'm also starting, as I talked to you about it, the last meeting, the financing port component. We are looking at that as, we're looking at that and um, after the first of the year, I plan on having more conversations with MERS about it. I have a, I have a, I have a meeting on Wednesday to learn about something that might be available to us, but that's about it. So we're still, we're still moving along.
Good. Anything else on MERS, anybody? Covid.
Yep, it's still here. Um, the uh, we're going to talk about one of the, one of the things I'm interested in considering later, but um, with covid right now, obviously, the public gatherings uh, restrictions are still in place. You still cannot have no more than ten people not in the same household in an indoor gathering. So that um, basically means that the meetings still have to be on Zoom for the time being, at least till January fifteenth. Um, the, how, the Senate and the House passed an extension to the law pertaining to uh, um, virtual meetings online, online virtual meetings. Um, it looks like it's ready to go to the governor's office for signature, so I would assume sometime before December thirty-first, they'll be signed. Meaning that this will be allowed to be in place until at least March twenty-first. Am I correct, Jessica?
Yeah, yep, probably longer than that, actually.
We've also with the vaccines, we've gotten some limited communications from Kent County about um, getting vaccines to our employees if they so wish. We do have certain sectors of employees that would be tiered higher to actually get the vaccine when it does become available to us. Um, I know at least from the police end, it's, if it, if the officers want to take it, it could be available sometime. They think probably in February is what they're telling us at this point. Surprisingly, we have, I know, like, from, from more, like, from my wife's experience, I know there are a lot more, they're getting a lot more information for their staff to get vaccinated or get vaccinations and all that, and we just aren't getting that information. Um, other than some limited correspondence from the health department, but that's where we stand right now with that.
All right, any questions on covid? Line check.
Yes, uh, just wanted to update you on that. The Light and Power Board did discuss it at their last meeting. Um, and they are, they're in the process of getting an appraisal for the, for the building. They, they've directed uh, Charlie to go get an appraisal. I believe they're also looking at putting a budget together for um, how they want to market it and um, I think they just are, they're, they, they're hoping we can work together and when we, when we do, when we do come to a point to making a recommendation on it. Anything else, Charlie? Am I missing anything?
No, I, I think that, that pretty well sums it up. We, we had a conversation at the last whole Light and Power Board meeting, just to kind of regroup and, and I think you pretty well summed it up.
Thank you.
Anything else on that, Perry, at all?
Well, the only, the only thing I would say is, when we get down to that, uh, I, I would certainly like to see the city look at putting an easement on the backside of it, so that if the city ever, and the downtown development authority never decides to put a Riverwalk along the backside, that's just one less hurdle that they have to go through, so.
Cool. All right, anything else for the line chat? New business, Protec, Mike?
Yeah, uh, this is our annual application for Protec, uh, protect public rights away. The Michigan Coalition to Protect Public Rights Away. They've been an organization for twenty-four years. Their, their purpose is to take the lead to coordinate actions to prevent, protect local government interests and to inform municipal officials of significant developments in the area of the public right of way management. In the past, they've been actively involved in issues regarding the, the placement of cable boxes, other utility objects in the right of way as well. They've also been involved in protecting PEC channels and the fees associated with them. This group is currently involved in the fight regarding the small cell DAS legislation that I've talked about in the past. Um, our cost is four hundred and seventy-two dollars and eighty-eight cents. It's the same as what we paid last year. Um, this is, we, we do this on an annual basis. We should have done it in June, but uh, it got missed. Uh, but we did get a notice to, we need to, we need to get our, our, uh, membership application if we still wish to do it.
Okay. Any questions on that?
Nope.
Motion to recommend our membership renewal.
I make that motion.
I'll support.
Cliff and Marty, any discussion? Sue?
Mayor DeVore.
Yes.
Councilmember Salzweedle.
Yes.
Councilmember Yankovic.
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
And Councilmember Groves.
Yes.
Social districts, Mike?
Yes, so um, these have become more of a topic, obviously, with the covid pandemic. Twenty-three cities in Michigan have established these social districts and what they are is basically it allow, it's a, it's a special liquor license um, that allows a municipality to designate a certain area of a, of a district as a, as a, uh, as a, as a area where they can, where businesses can extend their liquor licenses out and allow, allow people to, to gather in public places and, 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 uh, um, drink, they can drink alcohol or have meals or things of that nature. Um, City of Rockford just opened theirs up this weekend, um, and from what I understand, it was a big success. And uh, I was going to have Jessica speak on it. If you were interested in doing this, she's, she actually helped draft the legislation that was put into place to allow these to happen. So Jessica, can you kind of explain this a little?
Sure. Yeah, so it's sort of, um, it's a really straightforward process, actually, if you're interested in doing it. Um, the city council just has to pass a resolution essentially establishing, there are two boundaries you need to establish. You need to establish a social district boundary and then what are called commons areas, which are the areas within the social district where you want to permit alcohol to be consumed. And the whole idea is just to give people more space to drink essentially, and it allows businesses to sell, to sell liquor um, on their premises and then the consumer takes it and walks out into the commons area to consume it. It's sort of a shared space and this is especially helpful to businesses that don't have patio space or, you know, areas to expand that they need to because of covid restrictions, so. Um, so how this would work is the city passed a resolution establishing these boundaries and you can draw these boundaries pretty much however you need to to make it work. There's very few limitations. That's how you can draw your boundaries. Um, and then you have to come up with a maintenance and management plan, so who's going to clean up, who's going to enforce it and so forth? What hours do you want to see it open? Um, and then you just file that with the MLCC and it's pretty straightforward. Um, there's some sort of fun little rules involved, like you can only have certain cups that are used within the social districts and they have to indicate which licensee still drinks alcohol and so forth. Um, but aside from those, those issues, um, it's really relatively straightforward and then the business owner, if they're interested in participating, they go and get what's considered an add-on to their existing liquor license. And it's called a social district permit and they go straight to the MLCC and apply for it directly. So, um, they do have to have permission from the city council though, just a statement saying that they're eligible, so.
Jessica, what's the cost of that, of that permit?
I'm sorry?
What is the cost of that permit?
Um, yeah, my understanding is that they were capping it at around two hundred and fifty dollars or less. It's, it's relatively inexpensive um, compared to most liquor licenses. I, I could be a little off, but I'm sure it's within a few hundred dollars. It's, it's pretty cheap and that was intentional.
Cliff?
I had a question about the it's supposed to be contiguous to the restaurants involved, correct?
Right, so that's, yeah. I'm sorry, go on.
It's a two-part question. The second part is, can it include any of the parks area or is, are parks verboten?
No, it, it definitely can, so, um, so yes, to your point about um, contingency, the way that eligible businesses are defined in the act, there has to be um, two or more, which I interpret to mean three, um, generally speaking, that are eligible and contiguous to the, the commons area. You have to, you can, but you can literally draw it however you need to accommodate businesses that are interested, so it can be a very unusual if that makes sense, uh, so that you can, you can loop in any interested business by just drawing it right in front of their, you know, their boundaries. Um, in terms of parks, you can certainly include parks and a lot of municipalities are doing that. Um, this is being done in, in Grand Rapids, Rockford, Allendale, Kalamazoo, lots of other places nearby. Um, however, you're going to want to make sure that if you do have a prohibition on alcohol in your parks, you're going to have to lift that for purposes of this social district policy effect.
We have that. We do have that. We talked about that with the showboat. Um, we need to make that modification for that area. Uh, my thought, my thought process on this clip is, is if we were to designate a district, I would say that probably use the sidewalks on Main Street as the, as the district and go from Washington to, I would say, to where, so we can include New Union as well. And so you're doing that, you're, you're, you're going all the way to the east, which is Big Boiler, all the way to the west and everyone in between, um, the, you know, uh, Main Street, Flat River, Larkins. Um, and then another, and then another thought too, you could, what I, I went out to Rockford's today and I took a look at it and what they do, their, 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 their draw, their layout of their downtown is different than ours and theirs is more of a square, so what they did, they closed off Main Street for a block and that's, they've allowed people to congregate in that area. They have fireplaces, benches, tables, all that stuff. And then um, they um, they, that, that's the, you know, but their whole downtown is their, is their, is their area. My thought process is maybe we consider, if we wanted to, we could probably even close a street and, and use that area as a gathering area as well. I mean, if we were, I mean, we could do that. My thoughts were if you did that, maybe consider Monroe from, you know, from where the parking lot begins to, to Maine.
So basically, I could grab a beer at New Union and walk down to the Riverwalk with it and get something to eat from someplace? Is that, is that how it works?
That's correct, although there is, the MLCC has made it very clear that one thing you can do is you can't take a beverage from one licensee and take it into another licensee's business premises, so. So you'd have to finish that drink before you went in to another licensee, if that makes sense. And that's just so that you're not bringing other people's drinks into someone else's bar, um, or restaurant, so.
New Orleans, where you can go from one to the other, sidewalk and you can't cross the road with it, right?
So I guess I have two kind of first thoughts. Uh, my first is, obviously, I think this would be a huge plus for restaurants. I think that it would up the revenue. People would be interested. I know that there's one brewery in town that draws in hundreds of people and it's a hit and people want something to do and being outside in the winter is like ideal during covid. It's, it's what people are doing, so I think, I think it's an interesting idea. So, and then my second thought is obviously covid, um, the health and risk involved. So let's say Flat River Grill wanting to um, maybe use a couple of the parallel parking spots on the street. Would that be eligible if they barricaded those off?
On Main?
Yeah.
You, you can include um, any public area that you want to within the district. Now, if, bear in mind though, that if it can be part of the social district, it's not exclusive to one you, you, you were referring to a specific business owner, but it would be open to anyone with a permit, right, yeah.
But let, but if they got their beverages from Flat River, they would have to stay?
They can, they can leave, they could leave that particular establishment and go into the common areas, how, commons area, however you draw it, with that beverage in their hand.
Okay.
It gives them a New Orleans thing. I mean, they can walk wherever you want them to, to walk. Now, you have to put up a great deal of signage, um, and again, their cup has to indicate where they got their beverage. Um, and you do have to have a maintenance and management plan saying how you're going to enforce this. Um, we get a lot of questions about liability and how it would work is that the licensee is only responsible for serving the customer while they're on their premises and they can't serve to minors and they can't serve people who are, who are drunk. But once that person leaves and goes into the commons areas, they're no longer the responsibility of, of the business that serves them. And that's another important distinction that the MLCC has made.
Um, one add-on, Leah, to that is if, in regards to Main Street being able to restrict parking spaces or anything like that, that would be an MDOT issue.
Yeah.
They wouldn't, I would, don't think they would take too kind to that.
No.
I, I only mentioned it because I have seen it in different cities on the east side of the state. I know Northville and Plymouth have like barricades all the way down their parallel parking and it's just an extension of the restaurant.
Correct.
I was in Muskegon this summer and they had whole chunks that were blocked off. Same thing, and they had tables out there, but it was like their secondary streets, not the main ones.
Yeah. I think it's state high, state highway. Uh, Main Street's a state highway, so certainly, like Mike said, you could do it on uh, Monroe or some other streets, but state highway is a different story.
Wouldn't we have to have a lighted pedestrian crosswalk if we're going to have this district?
You would have to do whatever it takes to be, to satisfy your police department, essentially, that you are, that everything you had done is safe. How you draw it is really going to depend on what your police department's comfortable with and um, relating to safety. And the other thing you can do, you know, is you can divide up commons areas. You can have more than one in a social district. I don't know if that helps at all if you start to visualize a map, but you can have little islands of commons areas within the social district. And the consumption of alcohol can only occur within those, those islands, those common areas.
Well. Piece it out then and give New Union their little square commons area and then Sneakers and Flat River could have behind there and then Main Street could have behind there and then Big Boiler has a whole parking lot on the east side. That might eliminate your people trying to cross Main Street. And I would hope that, though, most people would be responsible enough to just be happy to have something to do. I think Main Street's had huge, or not Main Street, uh, New Union's had huge crowds, but not any kind of issues that I'm aware of as far as enforcement.
Different, different communities are also using this as a branding opportunity, so they'll give each commons area a special name and, and come up with cups that represent that particular area. So you can, you think, use it as a branding and marketing idea and then some have gone even further um, and started to help their businesses winterize so that, you know, to use available funds to help them winterize so that people can do this all winter, so. That's maybe next step, but.
Mike, you mentioned that, that Rockford is having success on that. What does that success mean? Is it hundreds of people showing up? Is it ten additional people sitting there drinking? What does that look like from a financial standpoint? That's happening, that they're seeing that, that this, this increase in business?
Well, this was the first week they did it and from what I understand, there were hundreds of people down there. I believe Suzie was there Friday night and she said it was packed. Um, and so that, for, I talked to their city manager today about it and he basically said that this is a lot bigger than they anticipated.
They have that, they have that covered pavilion kind of in the middle of everything. Was that included in it or you probably don't know?
No, it was not.
Okay.
Suzie, during this time then, are the merchants also staying open later to, to just hope that these crowds come into their stores as well while they're down there socializing or did, what'd you see?
I think that they were staying open later.
Okay.
But I, I'm not sure what the times were. Um, I know they all closed pretty early, but I would say it still looked like there was quite a few open, say at seven or eight o'clock at night.
She.
I do know that one of the, um, marinades there in Rockford, they indicated it was their best night ever since they've been open.
Okay.
This, uh, Sue, this is Perry. What, one quick question, did you, was there an issue with social distancing? Having hundreds of, hundreds of people?
I certainly felt like there was a little bit of an issue with that, yeah. But, um, they also, the one great big huge fire pit in the center, there were lots of people crowded all around there, but then they had taken some benches and, you know, moved the benches so they were closer to the fire pit and, you know, people couldn't quite be so close to one another at that point.
Where, where did they have a fire pit?
Right, on Main Street, right in the center. And then, and then they had various other gas fireplaces all over that were donated by like H2 Oasis and, and other fire, fireplace stores.
Well, those warming stations are a branding opportunity because people are going to stand there and stare at whatever logo.
Mm-hmm.
Chimera Design Warming Station or whatever it is, but.
Um, yeah.
They benefit, Rockford, Rockford is perfect for that because they're a perfect, their downtown is a perfect square. We'd have to branch it out to have a square over here and then a circle down here and then. So, but I think if it's drawn upright, there's a lot of these businesses, especially Larkins and Sneakers and the smaller places who don't have the long hours for takeout are going to benefit. And I think that's what's important. And even if people are in the downtown and they don't shop now, it doesn't mean they're not going to come back and shop.
My only concern, concern is, does it become, does it become branded as a super spreader?
There is, obviously.
I think if you did it multiple places where you could be outdoors, I don't think you're going to have the, the large groups all in one area. You'll have them spread out more over the city, I would think.
Which is kind of why I spread out, what was suggesting we spread it out as long as we did.
Yeah, but I, I, yeah, I could see myself having a yellow cup from New Union and actually walking down further past the zone to the next zone. So I, I can see that happening. I don't think you're going to stop and not carry down to the next zone.
I mean, it, the way I was, the reason I was asking those questions is I'm thinking it, if I was eating at, um, Big Boiler, out their back door is a parking lot, um, versus out the back door of Sneakers and, and the Gilmore Restaurant is the River Walk and the Show Boat and, I mean, so maybe there's a way to connect it so people can stroll. I don't know.
I think that's what you were saying, weren't you, Mike? Taking it.
Early on, yeah.
From Washington all the way down to basically Hudson and encompass the whole entire downtown, right?
Yeah, I was also thinking of going behind, like, just like what Cliff mentioned. I was thinking about that alleyway behind.
Yep.
I was thinking about incorporating that. I thought of maybe incorporating Monroe Street from like where the parking lots come in, you know, where the parking lots start all the way to, to Maine. So you could have more area to walk.
So what is, so like New Union has their outdoor fires. So if Mike Larkins wanted to do that in his big patio area, is this something now he'll be able to do to, to have a warming station for people during the winter?
Yeah, we need to, one of the things that Shannon and I are working on is we need to make a modification to the fire ordinance or to the, the ordinance. But that being said, what New Union is doing now does comply with the ordinance because they do use a, a, uh, they do use a, a regulated container and they're also covering it. And, um, we checked with the state to make sure there wasn't any issues with the commercial burning and it's not. Um, but our ordinance is pretty vague and it probably needs to be, we need to look at it again. So that's something that Shannon and I are working on after the first of the year.
Okay. And then, like, if, I, I don't have a problem shutting Monroe down. I think that'd be great. Shut that little area down. Um, it solves a lot of problems, but there again, it's going to need heating stations to whether it's a, it's a fire pit or, right? So.
Right.
We want to make sure we keep at least that good asphalt good because that's, that's rarity.
Chief, do you have anything that you want to throw at us on from your end, from an enforcement end?
My two concerns are how many days a week you want to do this? And we need to have an extra officer on just to patrol these, uh, social districts. And then, um, you need to, we remember to leave room for parking. So that people got a place to park their car and, I mean, somewhere near where they, where they're going to go. Otherwise we can advertise like the fairgrounds and they'll park there and they can walk into downtown.
Right.
That's a good idea.
With another Christmas parade with a whole.
So I do have one question. If we, if we were to do this and it turned into a super spreader situation, how fast can we get that permanent gone? Is that a thing?
Yep. So it is oddly enough, to set one of these up, you don't have to have a public hearing. To get rid of one, you do have to have a public hearing. Um, in the statute, that's what it requires. So, um, but that being said, I think that if you, if you had a super spreader situation, you would have a public health emergency. You could shut it down even faster than that. So, but if you decide to amend it or change it in any other way aside from an emergency situation, you would have to have a public hearing to do that.
When you put the resolution together, can you put wording in that says until such time as indoor dining is allowed or
Yeah.
executive orders expire or is it just going forward and then you have to have a public hearing to shut it down?
Several communities have put that language in there, Mayor, in the hopes that that would work. Um, and so, and no one's shut theirs down yet, obviously, because this is a relatively new concept. So we, we're trying it. Let me put it that way. So.
Well, I clicked on the link that listed all the places that are involved in it and I got tired of scrolling.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, it was, and I realized that they were individual restaurants listed for a particular, but it was like, holy smokes, everybody's doing this.
It, is this just a temporary or could this be permanent? I mean, could it be like a, uh, um, an Austin or San Antonio, uh, Texas where, you know, that's base, I mean, you can carry drinks anywhere you want in there, in a certain zone.
So the legislation does sunset now after a couple of years, but, uh, it is anticipated that if this goes smoothly, it could very well be extended. Just depends on how it goes.
I think it's a great, uh, great situation to have it continue.
Agreed.
It's Char, Charlie. I got a question for you. So if we made the, down by, uh, Sneakers and River Walk where the crossway is now, can light and power, uh, increase the, uh, lighting in that area?
Uh, to, to be honest with you, right now I don't have a detailed answer, but, um, uh, you know, it's something that would be fairly easy to explore and, uh, have an answer in the short term.
Okay. Because then we'd want the same lighting, probably down by Larkins, right there at that crosswalk, right there by King Millings Building, right by the city parking lot. We'd want that lit up too.
Yeah, and this, this is something that we would, we would definitely have to partner with the city on. Um, Mike, correct me if I'm wrong, uh, but the city owns all of the streetlights, correct?
That's correct.
So it would be, it would be something that would have to, you know, be, be coordinated with the, the city and, and try to, you know, establish what the goals were and, and we'll look at some, some different ways that, that possibly, uh, meeting those goals.
Okay. Might be an opportunity for the DDA to make, pay for lights or something. I mean, that's another.
Well, I just know that the new LEDs that they're putting up at the intersections are, they can turn them right up and they become super bright. Um, I would think one LED per, per crosswalk area would, you know, put a lot of light out.
Well, and those, uh, security lights that Ziglar put up too are, are bright. They work really well.
Yeah.
But we need a resolution, so we have two weeks to work on this. And then we also need to talk about cleanup and maintenance and extra trash cans and all that. So I think between everybody's here, Charlie and Jessica and Dan and Mike and Chief, that's a lot of brain power for what we need to do, right?
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah, I, I just.
We have a, we have several models. If you guys want to see them first or I could just give them to Mike and he could distribute them. We've drafted these for several clients now and we have sort of model, maintenance and management plans that you might want to look at. And the trickiest part really is coming up with a map, to be honest. Drawing the map is the hardest part. And then everything else is just sort of a boilerplate, so.
Well, I know when Marty and Jim and I were in Frankenmuth, this was pre-COVID, they had those warming stations outside. They had those igloo things with little couches and stuff in them. And this was pre-COVID and everything else was packed and these things were still in crazy high demand. And I think New Union's showing you that weather don't matter. People just want to come outside and they want to do something.
Yep.
So Mike, can you have something for us for the January meeting?
We will.
And maybe reach out to Mike Larkin and Tyler and.
Yeah, I was gonna, that was my next step after.
Yeah.
You, I was going to at least reach out to the, to the, to the businesses that have the liquor license and let them know what we're thinking.
Man, that's so much.
Be good to have their input.
Yeah.
And you know what? The more, you've seen it in Christmas through Lowell and Market on Main. Once people come to this downtown, they come back. So I think we could have long-term benefit from even the shops.
The lousy joke I made earlier, what I was trying to say is any way we could lever, leverage this into getting a crosswalk with a stoplight so that people could cross the street and not have to dance through traffic. That's, I should have been more direct.
You, you know our luck with MDOT.
All right. A fella can dream.
Yeah, but we've seen when we have big things downtown that the, the community in the whole understands when they see the people standing there, they stop and they've been pretty good about it. Now, don't get me wrong, there's, there's probably 25% of them that don't stop and just straight on through, but I think it's getting better and I think long-term wise, the more that it, we get it done, uh, you're gonna, they're going to get trained to see people standing there and stop. And what would it hurt to buy those little plastic guys with the flag, right?
Well, I, I'll tell you, I, you know, I'm downtown a lot and 80 to 85% of the time, courtesy wins out. Trying to cross to go to, from Cliff's store over to Flat River, from Marty's store across the street, courtesy wins more times than it loses. But I don't think a crosswalk is a terrible idea. I just think.
I'll tell you, as a new resident last, last summer, that was a weird concept to, um, understand that not everybody stops when you're trying to cross the street.
Right.
We should just put signs up that say, "Risk it. Take off."
Just run.
Yeah, just run.
I have one.
Exercise, excitement, all in one downtown.
I have one last question.
Yes.
So, like the beer store, so, um, if you have a beer, does that have to be in a particular glass? Um, where it came, so you can't, so somebody can't buy a 12-pack of beer at the little beer store, carry it out and be carrying that around?
Right. It's got to be in a container that's no larger than 16 ounces and it's got to be, it can't be glass, can't be glass and it's got to have two things on it. A logo or something indicating which, which commons area it's to be used in. Then also something showing, um, uh, where the, where it was obtained. In other words, the licensee who sold it. And every cup has got to say that. So believe it or not, cups have been one of the largest hurdles. Because they've got to sell.
So I was just, you know, because I know the beer stores in that area and I just, I can just see people, oh, I'm going in and buying a 12-pack and going out and opening one up and walking around with it.
Yeah, and that's the tricky part. Go ahead.
The concern with the cups, I think, was from places like Grand Rapids where they say, okay, you have a social district that runs through Monroe Center and the park, but you're not also trying to enable and encourage the people that already illegally drink in the parks and in bigger cities. So I think that was the lot of the thought behind the logo idea. All right. So we can have a resolution then, Michael, in two weeks?
Can do that.
Cool. Any other comments, questions, concerns about social districts?
Yeah, um, Mike, can you repeat the last eight minutes? Some odd reason I lost internet connection, so I have no clue what was discussed in the last eight minutes.
You're in charge of cleaning up the social district after the evening's festivities.
We got you a little cart and a broom.
It was unanimous.
If you go to see Liz, she has a bunch of those cool red vests that you can wear.
Yeah, am I the, am I the? It, am I? Okay. Yeah. Am I the only one that's having issue with the internet or did anybody else? Because everybody is kind of like frozen in time.
No.
What's that, Mike? I'm the only?
Yeah, you're the only one. We're breathing right through this, the rest of us.
Okay, gotcha. All right, I'll try to hold on.
Okay. Board and commission reports. Jim, go ahead.
Uh, the report that I have is on February 5th, the LCTV, uh, grants that you want to apply for are due into, uh, City Hall at 5:00 PM. So keep that in mind for those who, uh, want to apply for the LCTV grants.
Well, Marty.
So Planning Commission, we had, uh, three pieces come up in front of us. First was Culligan Water. Uh, they will be building a brand new building down there. It will be attached to that garage on that lot down there by D and D. Uh, and we did ask them to get with MDOT, uh, because MDOT's probably going to make them hook into either the bank, which is what they prefer to hook into, to try to minimize, uh, traffic turning out onto Main Street. Uh, the second thing, Grand Rapids Gravel, we gave them permission to go ahead and mine that property back there. Uh, it's a 10-year process. It could be done sooner. And their tents are when they're done. They're going to create a 27-acre lake and they're going to put 22 condos up on it when they're finished and they pull out. So that was good news. The third item was, is we have a recreational marijuana, uh, establishment that wants to move into a strip mall. Uh, we're real, we've got real good ordinances for standalone building. Uh, and we asked a lot of questions. It came down to, uh, his ventilation with rooftop, rooftop units being so close on top of these buildings down there in the strip mall and how he was going to handle the, uh, the raw air coming out of his building not to be sucked back into somebody else's heating unit and put into their building. the raw air coming out of his building, not to be sucked back into somebody else's heating unit and put into their building. And Amanda asked Mike, and I'll let Mike elaborate on this, if there's a complaint, it was they have 14 days to comply, correct, Mike? And if they didn't, uh, the city can pull their permit and that's it.
Yeah, we give them, I believe it's, I believe it's 10 days.
Or 10 days, sorry.
You correct it and then, um, give them an opportunity to correct it. After that, we can cite them and we can, I believe we're well within our right to, to pull their, pull their, uh, license in this top city.
But these strip malls, um,
Hey, Marty.
poses a different problem. Yeah, Jim?
Marty, about, uh, eight years ago, when I was on the planning commission, the, um, gravel pit came up again and, and I went around and met several, uh, businesses and people that were concerned of the environmental dust that happens from the mining operations, and then also the road repair that's gonna happen when those trucks take 10 years to go up and down the roads. Was, was that also brought up that they would maintain and take care of those types of issues?
No, and we had nobody come and have any comment, uh, not to. Basically, they're gonna leave the south side by the, of their, or the, excuse me, the west side of their property and they're gonna turn right out there on Bowles Road and go straight to the light. It's a very short amount of time. They're gonna be on Bowles Road.
Yeah.
They're gonna put five to six-foot berms all the way up and around. And several people went out to the five-mile, uh, pit and toured it and were quite amazed how quiet, uh, when, especially when they're crushing rocks. Uh, the sound wasn't there. Uh, the dust just isn't really all there. Um, and they, they appear to be, they want to be good neighbors. So I think if dust becomes an issue, I don't see a problem. I think they'll, they'll address it right away.
Yeah, because I know we, we had three or four citizens come in and speak, but if nobody was there this time, that's giving them.
We did have initial conversations with them when they were developing their site plan that they were gonna be limiting. Like what Marty said, is they're gonna be going out to Fulton to, with the trucks. They're gonna be going from, they're gonna be going down Bowles down by the.
We talked about too, yeah. It's a good plan.
Yep.
And they did increase, Marty, you guys did increase the height of the berms and the buffers, right? Because.
By two, by two and a half feet or two foot.
Yeah.
Um, by, by time they're 20 feet in the ground, you won't, and we, uh, 45 feet is as tall as we're gonna let them, uh, stockpile anything. Um, they wanted 50, but we figured that was just a touch too high, especially with the, the walking bridge that, uh, Lowell Township just put in, um, so to keep everything down as low as possible. Uh, believe it or not, uh, the watershed area there, we talked about our new wells going in. We talked about how it'll affect the aqueduct underneath to this lake being created out of the aqueduct, us pulling water out at peak times and future expansion. So we, that was a, that was a, it took quite a while to get it.
Yep, good job.
Yeah, I thought the planning, I was there as, just as a interested resident. I thought the planning commission did a good job like they always do. And getting my questions answered before I even had to ask them. I have a concern about that strip mall. Um, situation, but sounds like they're gonna come back with their plan. So I guess we'll wait and see. I I'm a little apprehensive, but the planning commission did a really good job, I thought. So.
Well, if we have, if we have the ability to shut their license down, they're not gonna want to fool around with the kind of
No.
income they're making.
Yep.
Yeah, I, I don't, I mean, I, I agree, we should be concerned about it, but I think if they're not taking care of the odor problem, they're not gonna be selling any product.
Yeah, and this was a micro, uh, micro dis- um, dispensary. And they grow 100 plants, 10 plants per little pod unit that is climate-controlled. Uh, it has carbon filters that ventilate the air, but it was the odor that's created inside the building when you open those up. You know, your, your HVAC system sucks that old air out and it goes up top. We just didn't want it getting into the neighboring building. So they were gonna come back with a proposal of how to, how to handle that problem.
And a security plan too, right, Marty? Because yeah, planning commission seemed concerned about the neighboring businesses and any risk there. So they were gonna do a security plan as well, too.
Yep.
Again, I thought the planning commission did a fantastic job, um, on all the issues, really. Um, is that it, Marty?
Yep. Yep.
Cliff?
Um, unfortunately or fortunately, I was not able to attend the Zoom meeting for the trails because I had people in my store until seven o'clock. I sent Betsy a message at five to six and said, I got people. Anyway, um, I did write a grant request for a hundred thousand for the historical district. Reason we asked for such a large amount is, um, Mr. Slagle has some plans for the, um, the building on the, on the north side. He wants to restore that to its original uh, front. And also King Milling wants to, um, reconfigure the McQueen Building, which is their corner there. Uh, the, the major scene is in the window. That's the McQueen Building. They need to move their corporate offices into there and they want to upgrade the outside, make it more historic. And just those two grants alone would be a lot of money. So we're asking the, uh, community fund for a hundred K. We'll see if we can get it.
All right. Leah, anything?
Yeah, um, I met with Parks and Rec and we talked a lot about the baseball fields usage, um, and how that's gonna be divided up. Um, we didn't come to a consensus. There was quite a few questions we had about it. So next meeting, we'll go back over that. Um, and then, um, we also had two member renewals of Teresa Moon and Susan Pomper. Um, so I'm excited to continue getting to know them. And next, we have, um, dedicated our next meeting to going over the project in Recreation Commission Project Priorities List. So that's next meeting.
Cool. Thank you.
Yeah.
Jim? No, we already did, Jim. Jim, you went to lighting power, right?
Yeah.
Okay. I, uh.
Uh, I think I spoke on that before.
Oh, was that last meeting?
For, for Marty.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. I was an hour late, so I apologize. Uh, we'll make the next one at six o'clock, not seven.
Uh, Fire Authority canceled for December. Water Task Force canceled for December. No DDA December. So we have January 6th is the Showboat Committee, Jim and I. And January 14th will be the next Fire Authority. So it'll be the second January meeting for that update. But we're gonna discuss that, uh, burn ordinance as well. So it sounds like it's pretty antiquated. Uh, any questions on the budget report? Mike, any budget updates?
Really not much has changed since last month. Um, we still have the same officer. We still have the same situation with the officer's investigation. And we also, um, well, we do have a new situation. We have another officer who is out on injury right now. One of our full-time officers. Um, they're on like, they're on, they're on short-term disability. So the city's paying 40% um, of their, of their salary and benefits. And then the, the remaining portion is be paid by the, uh, the the disability insurance carrier. That, that officer, we believe, will be out for six to eight weeks. Um, that's really, that's really, I mean, as I said before, with all the issues in the police department, that's really been our biggest budget thing that we're paying attention of right now. But we also anticipate, if you recall, I mentioned to you, we had gotten some significant, you know, we've got an increase in revenue. We got a significant amount of reimbursement through the, uh, through the CARES Act. Um, I do believe, if you recall, we, we submitted a $92,000 request for police payroll reimbursement and we initially received half of that amount. Um, I do, I did get some correspondence about two, three weeks ago from Treasury. And I, they didn't tell us how much we were gonna get of that, of the other half of the, the money, but I do success. I do expect we will get something more. I just don't know what. Um, and then that's about it.
Okay. Any questions for Mike? Discussion questions on monthly reports. Mike, City Managers Report.
Yes, um, first thing I want to address is the, um, last week, there was some, um, discussion on some local social media pages pertaining to an issue at Root Lowell and, uh, Bushnell. Um, my understanding of this situation is, is this has been something that's been in place for many years. Um, I believe there was, uh, from the way it was explained to me, I talked to Dave Pasquale, I talked to Jim Hodges, and I talked to Dick Went, who were all involved around when this happened, beginning around the late eighties and early nineties. And from what I understand, was back in the sixties, there was, um, some solvents that were dumped on the Root Lowell project, uh, property that there was a plume that went into the Bushnell property. And, um, they knew about this, so they took the steps with DEQ at the time to try and address, to try and address this going forward. Um, I've had discussions with the school and the, um, Root Lowell. And from what I understand, they believe they've been in compliance with everything that was required of them from, from Eagle. Or they're Eagle now, but they've been doing what they're supposed to be doing. Um, my understanding was over the summer, um, there was some testing done at Bushnell to determine whether or not vapor, there were vapors underneath the ground, if they rose up and went into the school. And to my understanding, that, those tests have come back that there's, that that hasn't been an issue. Um, I am aware that there is concerns, um, in that area about possibly some other effects that may have come up. Um, the, I do know, my discussions with the, um, with the school, I've tried to reach out to Eagle to get more clarification on this and, and explain to them what the concerns are. I have yet to hear back from Eagle. Um, that being said, I have had conversations with the school. And I know the school is being mindful of, of those issues. And I believe they're reaching out to the proper sources, proper entities to determine whether or not more investigation of some of those health concerns um, are gonna be investigated. Um, just to verify, um, as I said, the city has never been a party to this matter. Um, we have verified, we have, we have reviewed, um, our records. Uh, we've gone through past meeting minutes from the late eighties, early nineties and late nineties to determine whether or not this was ever addressed at the city level. It hasn't. Um, the city does not, um, city is not a, um, they do, we do not handle and we do not enforce environmental law that is done through the state of Michigan. We don't have the capabilities to do that. Um, but we are obviously paying attention and we will help, we'll try to assist anywhere we can. And, and that's really all I have about the issue. Um, we've hired, we've hired a new position in the public works. Um, you might know him. His name's Jeff Phillips. Sat in your chair not too long ago. Um, Jeff retired from the Gerald Ford Airport back in May. And when Joe Baker retired, we brought him in on a part-time basis to help us because we couldn't fill the full-time positions with the, uh, with the pending labor contract. Now that the labor contract's been settled, um, we've been able to, uh, activate Jeff to, to full-time. And really with his experience, it was, it was really a no-brainer for us to, to make that commitment. So we've hired that position. Um, we still are trying to fill a Sexton position. We did an interview last week and offered the individual the position. That individual turned it down. Um, so we're still looking, uh, for that position. Um, as I mentioned before, the fire chief and I are gonna be looking at the open burning ordinance, probably sometime before the first of the year. Um, last week, uh, the budgeted capital project at the wastewater treat, treatment plant was completed. If you recall, we, we budgeted to repair the lid at digester number three. Um, this is the one where Sue is, is gonna bill us 50% now and then the remaining, um, on July 1st of next year. Um, and just want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, and, uh, we'll see you when, when we come back in January. That's all.
Cool. Uh, appointments, Leah reached out to Teresa and Sue, consensus on them continuing on parks? Okay, Cliff, Cliff, were you able to talk to Steve or Nancy on Historic District?
Nancy is good. She very much wants to continue.
All right. Any problems with that? Consensus on Steve continuing? He does a really good job with those meetings. And Nancy as well. I like having them there. Um, who else? Mike, we're gonna work on DDA here before
Yeah.
The new year, because we didn't have a meeting.
Yeah, but we'll be meeting in the first, uh, Thursday in January.
Perfect. All right, uh, anything else on appointments? Council comments, Cliff?
Um, I'd just like to say one thing, it, it, to anybody watching that has the means to get a meal, uh, to eat restaurant food, supporting our local restaurants right now is, if you have the money to do it, please do so. Um, it, the, the value that they add to bringing people to the city cannot be overemphasized. As a main street business owner, I can tell you, pedestrian traffic is way down when the restaurants aren't open. So we need to keep them alive. Uh, do so, please, and, uh, happy holidays, happy new year to everybody.
Thank you. Marty?
So Cliff, to that note, uh, we advertised on the Lowell radio station. And the latest advertising we're doing, and we're doing it with Tap House Bowl. Uh, if you go to our local restaurants and you do a takeout or you buy a gift card, uh, either Lowell or Ionia, because we want to help as much as we can, uh, you bring them in and we'll give you 25% off an item. Uh, Greg Camfield has started, uh, his match program up to 25,000 again. God love that guy. And I think that'll be a good, that'll be another good boost because he, that was successful last time he did that. Um, always trying to figure out different ways to, to draw people, you know, to go to our local restaurant. And, yeah, without, without them, i- it's pretty tough. So we're, we're spending corporate dollars to try to advertise to get people to, to do it. So we'll see how successful it is. That's it.
Okay, Jim?
Yeah, and, and Lou, what Marty and Cliff says, yeah, we definitely need to get out and support the businesses, but we also need to make sure we're supporting our residents however we can, so they can either get back to work, get some stimulus money going so that they can get out and, and support the businesses because it is a two-way street, uh, when it comes to that part of it. So, um, let's, let's keep on doing that and, uh, wishing everybody a, a healthy and happy holiday season.
Thank you. Leah?
Yeah, I'm kind of a repeat on, on what everybody else is saying. And I think it's so important to, to really support our local businesses, but also the citizens that support those businesses. Um, and, um, yeah, Merry, Merry Christmas, happy holidays. Enjoy, enjoy the holidays.
All right. Gift cards and don't forget about Low Bucks. Low Bucks are the perfect gift. You can use them, and gift cards you can use after, you know, everything helps now. You can use the gift cards when you can sit down and have a meal with families. Um, make sure though, that you're tipping these people and that you're tipping them like they deserve to be, because nobody else is out taking care of these people. The government's not helping them like they should be and I don't see them stepping up to help any of us anytime in the near future. So keep it local, take care of our own. It's what we've always done. There's no reason not to continue to do it, especially now. Jim?
Uh, make a motion to adjourn at 8:08.
Second that, support, second.
And Cliff, motion and a second to adjourn, Sue.
Councilmember Salzweil.
Councilmember Salzmeto.
He's gone.
Councilmember Yakovic?
Sure.
Councilmember Chambers? Councilmember Grove?
Yes.
Mayor Devor.
Yes. Thank you, guys. I appreciate you. Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Thanks for covering the plumage, Mike. I appreciate it.
Problem.